For Lake Orion to order Monday, August 25, 2025. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. President Rudd?
Here.
Pro Tem Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Camparoni?
Here.
Councilmember Danalitis?
Here.
Councilmember Lamb?
Here.
Councilmember Mosher?
Here.
You have a quorum. Thank you. Item number four, presentations. We have one. And it's the proclamation recognizing September as National Suicide Prevention Month and National Recovery Month. So many of us know people who have been affected by suicide and substance abuse. And so whereas suicide is the 12th leading cause of death in the United States, and every life lost to suicide is a profound tragedy that affects families, friends, and entire communities, whereas National Suicide Prevention Month provides an important opportunity to raise awareness, stigma, and promote resources and support for individuals and families struggling with mental health challenges and suicidal thoughts. And whereas September is also observed as National Recovery Month, celebrating the strength and resilience of those living in recovery, and recognizing the vital role that prevention, treatment, and recovery services play in supporting healthier communities. And whereas recovery is possible and attainable for those living with substance use and mental health conditions, and the stories of recovery offer hope and inspiration for countless individuals. And whereas the Village of Lake Orion is committed to fostering a community of compassion, understanding, and support, where individuals are encouraged to seek help without shame, and where families and caregivers are uplifted in their journey. And whereas raising awareness about suicide prevention and recovery empowers our residents to connect with lifesaving resources such as the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, and reminds us all that help is available and hope is possible. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Teresa, or the Village Council President of the Village of Lake Orion, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as National Suicide Prevention Month and National Recovery Month in the Village of Lake Orion, Michigan. Be it further resolved that we encourage all residents to learn the warning signs of suicide, to offer support to those in need, to celebrate stories of recovery, and to work together to build a community where no one struggles alone. And I'll sign that afterwards. So, yeah, just so the community knows, you know, help is out there, and we want to support those who are struggling. So talk to someone, find resources. We don't want it to be a shame for anyone to do so. And so, yes, that we are declaring National Suicide Prevention Month and National Recovery Month.
Teresa, do we need a resolution?
I don't think we need a resolution. No.
Okay.
Thank you, though. Item number five, call to the public. Each person wishing to address the Village Council shall be afforded an opportunity to do so. If you wish to comment, please stand and raise your hand to indicate you wish to speak. When recognized, give your name and address, direct your comments to the chair, and remember that comments are limited to four minutes. Is there anyone for call to the public? Good.
Yeah, Donal Kindred here. I kind of wanted to remind the village that you guys work for us. And me, the chief, and Darwin, we took a little walk through the village here the other day. We walked down through the parking lot where I said there was water flowing under it. And my witness still stands by what he's seen, I still stand by what I've seen. They've tried to put a Band-Aid over a broken artery. You can't doctor up the parking lot, make it look pretty, and still leave the problem running under the water, running under the parking lot. We're going to have that tested. I was informed that I will be one of the first people to be called, so I can be there when this test is done. If I don't find this test under my satisfaction, seeing as how this is a free service, I will hire an inspector from outside our agency to come in and do a test myself. Ms. Rudd, just because you do not like to answer the questions that we ask does not mean that you have a right to shut down and not respond. This is a violation of Code 42 U.S.C. 1983. It's called viewpoint discrimination. This is against my rights. This is against anybody's rights who you refuse to answer a question to. Now, I've been trying to talk to people and tell people what's been going on here. And ever since Mr. Norris sat up on that council, the first night I came here, you people were informed that I was going to be an issue. And I didn't like that very much. Because when it came my turn to talk, all of a sudden, he had to go potty. So everybody could vacate the room here and go out and howl, and he could tell everybody, put this on a timer. Because until that day, I've watched several meetings, and nobody was stopped with a timer at four minutes all the time. I watched our DDA, for example, speak for 10, 15 minutes. Nobody said a word. But that's neither here nor there. I'm going to do what I have to do with my attorney to see to it that the things that I wanted done get done. And I'm going to be doing a little bit more investigating myself into some other things that aren't doing so well in our community. So until then, you ladies and gentlemen, have a good evening. I've got critters to go tend to and feed. And I wish you luck with everything that's going on. If they would have taken care of that road before it washed out, like everybody complained about it before it happened, they wouldn't have got stuck right now trying to do it. Kind of like the water that's been running under that parking lot. If that gives way, you're going to be stuck in a situation that you were just stuck in over on Clarkston Road in Lake Orion.
Thank you.
Have a good night, ladies and gentlemen. We'll see you next time.
Anyone else for call to the public? All right, we'll close call to the public. Item number six, approval of the agenda by order of the president. No matters will be discussed after 9:30 PM unless the council votes to continue the meeting. And I would ask that we add an agenda item to discuss the event application for the Lions Jubilee.
Support.
I also would like to ask to add a brief report on the basketball court and a brief report on the Cityhood Committee.
So, item B, Lions Jubilee Event App. Item C, Report on the Basketball Court. This is under item 10. And D, Report on Cityhood.
I have a procedural question.
Yes.
So we, at the last meeting, we established a follow-up committee on Cityhood. Wouldn't it be appropriate to discuss Cityhood in the Cityhood Committee before coming into council?
I think it's a report on the committee.
No, it's a report on, I have one item left over from the original committee. When council people asked questions about the findings of the original committee, and so I went and got the answer, and I'd like to report that answer. So not really a discussion, it's more of a report.
So I'll make the motion to approve the agenda with items B, Lions Jubilee Event Application, C, Report on Basketball Court, and D, Report on Cityhood, added under item 10, Other Items.
Support.
So we have a motion, and we have support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, Consent Agenda. All items on the consent agenda are approved by one vote. Item A, Approval of Engagement Letter for Auditing Services, HPPLC. Item B, Budget Amendment, Steeple Repair. Item C, Approval of Village Council Regular Meeting Minutes of August 11, 2025. Item D, Approval of Village Council Special Meeting Minutes of August 11, 2025. Item E, Receive and File of DDA Regular Meeting Minutes of July 15, 2025. Item F, Receive and File of Invoice Distribution Report for August 26, 2025. Item G, Approval of Special Event, Michigan Downtown Day. Item H, Approval of Special Event, Here Lies Lake Orion Cemetery Tour. Aye, Approval of Special Event, Halloween Extravaganza. And item J, Approval of Special Event, Witch's Night. Counsel.
Move to approve the consent as presented.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Lamb, supported by Ms. Mosher. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight and nine, we have nothing. Item 10A, 2024 Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Cost Limits. Mr. Sanchez.
Counsel, administration is requesting that the Village Council determine the option it desires to select compliance with Public Act 152 of 2011, as amended for publicly-funded employee health insurance costs limits for the upcoming medical benefit plan coverage year. The village's medical benefit plan coverage year runs from September 1st to August 31st. Public Act 152, as amended, requires that local units of government select one of the following options for health insurance cost contributions. One, hard cap limit. The State of Michigan establishes hard cap limits each year based on the change in the medical care component of the U.S. Consumer Price Index for the most recent 12-month period. Attached is a determination for the current year. If council desires to comply with the hard cap limits, no action is required, as this is the default option for local units of government under Public Act 152. Option two, the 80/20 limit. Local units of government, by simple majority vote of the governing body, may opt to limit the local units' health care contributions to 80% of the total cost of all medical benefit plans. Under this option, the village would be 80% of health care... Under this option, the village would be 80% of health care, health insurance benefit costs, and employees would be required to pay 20% of such costs. Option three, opt out. Local units of government, by a two-thirds vote of the governing body, may opt out of the health insurance contribution limits. By opting out of the Act 152 limits, the village would be free to cover 100% of the costs of health insurance for employees, or may require employee contributions towards such costs at any level that council determines appropriate. At this time, administration recommends that Village Council take no action and therefore accept the default hard cap limit on health care cost contributions as outlined in the attached State of Michigan Health Care Cost Limitation Determination. The document also provides information for next year's limits.
Thank you. Counsel. Mr. Lamb?
Go ahead.
I think in the past, we've always done the hard cap, so I move to do nothing. Take no action as recommended.
Mr. Danalitis?
So this topic was raised at our last meeting, August 11th, in the Village Manager Comments, which was the end of the meeting, and it was set for discussion and direction at this meeting tonight. The document included in the meeting packet tonight outlined the annual cost limits for the 26-calender year, and was dated March 28th of that year, five months ago. Council asked at the August 11th meeting for descriptions of the available plans, as well as the costs to be provided prior to tonight's meeting, and that was not provided in the meeting packet. And as it turns out, the open enrollment period for our employees was last Friday. So in the letter that we got five months ago, it came up in the council meeting at the very last minute as part of the manager's comments, to be put on the agenda today, which is three days after our employees had to make a decision. I think that that's unfair. And at this point, I agree with Mr. Lamb. We have no choice but to, but to do this. But, but I think we should have, I think we should have addressed this long ago. So anyway, I, personally, I'd like to know how this fell through the cracks for five months. But I agree with no action at this time, but I'd like to make a follow-up motion so that we're not in this trick bag next year.
Bye.
Did you have a follow-up motion that you would like to make?
I do. But I don't know if we want to take no action first.
I'm comfortable with no action.
Okay, then, I could say call, I'm open to letting your second motion follow.
Okay. So I would like to make the motion to direct the village manager to bring this topic into council at our April 13th, 2026 council meeting for discussion, at which time we'd establish a council subcommittee to evaluate the 2026, '27 health care plan choices, as well as the cost associated with those health, with those choices. And my recommendation, or a recommendation of the subcommittee to be presented to the council no later than July 27th, 2026, so that we've acted on what I assume we're going to get in March again next year, so that when the open enrollment period starts for our employees, they know where they stand. But I also went back and looked. We're spending over $300,000 this year in our budget in health care costs. I think we need to take a look at that, which is why I'm suggesting we have a subcommittee.
So we have a motion. Do we have support?
Support.
So a motion and support. Other discussion?
I think it's good to have these things on the perpetual calendar. Darwin has a lot of things on perpetual calendar. This one must not be on his perpetual calendar, so it'd be good to add.
I don't know that I'm entirely comfortable with creating a subcommittee to go through and look at the options, because normally that is something that administration does in discussion too with some of the employees, I think. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but that discussion happens because we have a company that comes in, a benefit service that comes in and presents available plans, and those choices are made in conjunction with employees. So I think that's a little bit outside of our scope to come in and say, we're going to evaluate all the plans. I think the financial piece is within our scope, and that should, I agree with you that that should have come much earlier. So if we're looking at these and we think, well, maybe we actually want to do the 80/20, there's time for employees to actually evaluate, and administration to evaluate what the impact on employees would be. So I would support that part of making sure this gets on our desk beforehand. I don't think I can support a subcommittee to evaluate the options, since that is an employee benefit service discussion.
I agree. I agree. It's an administrative thing. It has to be, I feel, gone through with the administration to talk about what those options are.
Mr. Ford?
And I too agree. I think that, you know, I don't mind it coming to us in April next year. I think there might be time. At that point, we get a chance to take a look at, and then maybe with discussions with Darwin, we can, we can take a look at that other part of this motion that we don't agree with about the subcommittee. So I don't mind if we wait till then, I don't know, we could wait till then and kind of make a decision on that subcommittee too, if we feel at that point we need it.
I just think there's value in being educated.
Absolutely. And in the past, I feel like we have done a deeper dive. We've had much more of a presentation on the available options that the employees were going to have. Because like you said, we haven't even seen what the employees' options are.
And we asked for that and didn't get it.
And we have in the past, we've had a meeting to go over those things.
Yeah, we went over all the options.
Could I ask a clarifying question? When do you get those options, or when do you have those discussions with the benefits reviews?
I defer to the chief.
So I, for one, don't take the benefits, so I'm not overly invested in this conversation. But the facts are that on July 10th, there was a benefits meeting for all of the staff that was offered to the staff to go over the different options. There was some issues with the hard cap concerns about a week or two ago, and there was a secondary benefits meeting to clarify some of those and some other options, I believe, last week. But it was July 10th was when we were notified to have that meeting.
Is that late? Is it normally earlier than that?
That's about right.
About right, okay.
There are two meetings. They have a meeting with administrative staff, Darwin and Sonia, and then meeting with the rest of the group a couple weeks afterwards. I'd like to get more information for the council on the, our benefit rep, on their process. We don't know what, what their timeline is for shopping. My understanding is they shop for the best plan for us, cost and benefit-wise. I'd like to see what that is and bring it to council so everybody knows the process.
Yeah. Okay, because I think I would be comfortable with, as soon as the options are made available, that council is informed, especially about the financial aspect of it, so that we can make a determination on what we want to do for hard cap, 80/20, opting out, so that way employees, when they are selecting their health plan, they have that information, and it's not a surprise later.
Yeah, I, I agree. We could address the, if we need a committee later, it's not a problem with me to do it later. The, I recall in previous years, we had much more discussion about the benefit packages, and, and we have had some talk about, you know, a little more uniformity in the contracts with the employees, and our, even though it's the manager's purview, we, we can't establish a protocol if necessary to get a little more uniform stuff going on in the future. Do you want to amend your, your motion, George?
I guess I'm not sure what I would amend it to.
Just to remove the subcommittee formation from your, the dates.
I think, I think the date is also really, yeah, you said, and the dates, because if they're not, if they don't have the plan options from the benefits provider, the, the company that shops around for the, the village plans until June or even July, then, and April isn't going to do us any good.
And I, I guess, my intention is not to dictate the timing. My intention is to make darn sure that we're not doing it after the fact next year.
Yes.
Because this is ridiculous.
Absolutely understand that.
And there's no excuse for it. So we need to do better. I would just ask that we bring the timeline to you, so maybe at the next council meeting you can make this, make, set those dates. If there's a better timeline, I'm all for it. I can just tell you the timeline this year would be.
Yeah. So you'd be willing to do that for us next, the next council meeting?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Would you like your motion to stand, or would you like to withdraw it till, and postpone till the next council meeting?
I'll withdraw my motion, but I guarantee you, in April of next year, if we haven't heard anything about it, you're going to hear it from me, because I'll have it on my calendar.
Yeah, okay. So if there's any other discussion or any public comment on it, other than that, no action needed. So moving on to item 10B, Lions Jubilee Event Application. So I brought that up. The Lions Club has submitted their event application, but the one thing that they don't have is their certificate of insurance, because they cannot get that until much, much closer to the event. Usually it's about 90 days. But according to our process, we cannot begin to process their event application until that insurance certificate comes in. So we thought, this year was messy, because we didn't, the event application wasn't sent out to the various departments, and then didn't come to us until very late in the game, and that's because of that insurance, or the insurance certificate. So I would like to make a motion to direct administration to send out the application to the various departments for review, knowing that it will not get approved until there is insurance when it finally comes to council. But that way, the process can get started, and we're not put in the same place that we are next, or next year that we were this year.
I totally support that.
So that's my motion, direct administration to send out their event application for approval, knowing that full approval cannot happen until the insurance certificate is provided.
Send it out for review.
Review, yes.
Review.
For review, to the various departments, and, yes.
Yes, I totally support that.
Okay. So we have a motion and we have support. Any other, any comments?
So the, and I agree, we should get started right away. My only additional comment would be that knowing where we ended up with all the discussion last year, I would like to suggest that the insurance certificate that the Lions provide specifically indicate that the, that the underwriter understands, assuming that the fire marshal does not approve, I would like to see the underwriter, the underwriters understanding that they're insuring without the fire marshal's approval.
If it's that.
If, if that's what it is, correct. But I think, you know, I think we, we ended up in that, in somewhat of a cursory discussion last, last time, and I think, I think that that needs to be disclosed. Because what I, what I would hate to see happen is we have a problem, and then come to find out that the insurance company says, wait a minute, you didn't have fire marshal approval, and that's negligence on your part.
I'm going to let my motion stand as is, only because we don't know what the process is with the fire department this year. But certainly that is something we could talk about, I think, once it gets back to us then.
Sooner than later, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just, I just want to put that out there, so that there's an understanding. That'll, that'll at least be my expectation. I can't speak for anybody else, but that would be my expectation, so that, I'd like to see that understood.
Mr. Lamb?
I, I, you know, I want to see it move forward. I'd rather have any negative discussions about it. Start really early, so that we don't have the big pressure. The insurance requirements, I'm thinking that when we, when this happens, we're going to get the village attorney involved, because I, after speaking with the insurance carriers last year, I talked to the MMLR carrier, the, the head guy, and I talked to the, the Lions Club insurance carrier agent. And they, you know, they told me that there were no exceptions in their policies from lack of having some approval for something. So I'd like that clarified too. I'm, I'm pretty sure that, that they told me that they're covered no matter what, or the kind of words they used, it was kind of scary, but they said they had insurance coverage no matter what. So I'd like to, this year, get some professional opinions on that stuff, if we go against flow like we did.
Mr. Ford?
My only question or comment is, is the Lions Club's dates, you know, because one of the binds we ran into, they already booked everything. And I don't know what time of year they booked that. Granted, they shouldn't do it until they get approval, but is, does that fall within that 90-day prior to, like, to get their insurance? Is that, is that, I don't, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I can't speak for their process, but I know, you know, when it comes to us, if we wait till 90 days, then, you know.
Yeah, well, that, yeah, and that's part of the problem.
That becomes really messy, but.
We ran into is that.
If we get review now, and then it comes to us, everything then becomes contingent. We can approve with contingencies or things like that.
Hopefully, they don't book anything based on that, prior to that 90-day.
Sometimes it's a placeholder. Again, I can't speak for their process. Sometimes they have placeholders, but. Any public discussion? Seeing now, we have a motion on the floor to direct administration to send out the Jubilee application to departments for review, and then, yeah, coming to council for review, pending, with, knowing that no approval can happen, a final approval could happen until an insurance certificate was provided. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10C, Report on the Basketball Court. Mr. Lamb?
Mr. Lamb, that's many.
I almost said Mr. McClary, and then I was like, not McClary, and then Mr. San, no, not Mr. Lamb.
Thank you very much. So being a little frustrated with the basketball court, I went and did some investigation as to why it was going to be so much more money. And I discovered that if you add on the engineering fees and their contingencies amounts, that added on 25,000 to the cost. So then I went upon myself, and I provide you, I made an estimate, if we did part of it outside and tried to do some of it in-house, and I got it down to the 40 grand, but the DPW informed me they're not really specialists on concrete foundations, and they were not really supportive of doing it in-house, just because their lack of expertise, which I don't blame them. So then the DPW director reminded me that we had had a fairly conservative proposal last year, so we reached out to the Hutch, Hutch paving to give us a preliminary quote. And they were able to quote us on the size of basketball court that, that was desired, the larger child size, junior high-size court. I went out and measured it with west, and we could probably put the goalposts, still keep them north and south with minor modifications, to get it away from the play structures. And then we had a discussion about the base. We don't know what kind of base is underneath there currently. The DPW suspects that there is no base. I don't believe anything until I dig a hole. They're reluctant to dig a hole in the middle of the basketball court right now. I'm going to pressure them to do that, but, and then, so we got another proposal from, from the Hutch paving. The asphalt is not quite the same stuff specified in the engineer's proposal. It's a cheaper mix using a recycled asphalt. They told me that the, the mix that's specified in the engineer's report- They told me that the, the mix that's specified in the engineer's report is a, is a premium court mix, and it's this type they would use for a fully painted basketball court, where there's, they put a lot of paint down and different color zone things. And he thought, they thought that this mix would be suitable for our purposes. And then, they agreed that if they dug it up and there was some base there, or soils more suitable to less base, like maybe a sand subgrade instead of a clay or topsoil subgrade, they'd be willing to work with, with that. So their, so their whole proposal was thirty-two, four eighty, plus nine ninety-eight, plus eighty-six, and I didn't add it up, but it's somewhere between forty and fifty. And they basically, we don't have to do anything, except let them dump any excess dirt at the cemetery fill area. So I just wanted to present this to you.
Yep.
And then, I believe the manager is working on the funding. There's some issue about if we use CBDG funds, it has to go out for full bids again. And then, there's other restrictions. So I asked him, is there any compensating funds we could balance out, or maybe we should just bid it again? But I was going to ask, you know, to, no, they were considering a lesser, a lesser mix, and, but everything else could be gotten for just a little more money than the forty thousand. So, I think it's progress.
Yeah. Did we also verify with the Parks and Rec Committee, just the, the size? I know Kristi Garbasik had all the dimensions and everything, and...
I reviewed all, absolutely all the documentation, and I went on the internet and researched the court sizes, and I believe this is exactly what they're looking for. It's a full-size basketball court, and the smallest configuration that's accept, usually acceptable in a school. So, I, looked, looked good.
Yeah, okay. And we verified if they wanted eastwards, north-south, because I thought, north-south, they were concerned about it going into the street.
No, no, it's, it's, there's a swing set, and a fence, and a play structures, and it fits better north and south, to give you a lot more room between the play structures. People aren't running off the basketball court and running into the swing sets on the, on the east? Yeah, on the east.
Yeah.
And if, you know, the north-south is much more flexible, and the swing set there has only got four simple posts, and so it had to be moved over a few feet.
We've been, we've been told that north-south is more ideal for the sunlight, so it's never in one person's eye versus the other, eastwards.
Okay, and there's not a lot of concern about the basketballs going into that water?
It's only a couple more feet. I don't know what they're all concerned about, the...
Well, just because it's a slope.
Because it's down.
Yeah, it's down though. Okay. Mr. Ford?
I just want to make sure that, that we run this by Parks and Rec, too.
Yeah, I just, I want to move it forward for you.
So that they can then come back to us with, with their final recommendation.
That's why I put this together, was for you guys to know whatever you wanted with it.
I think Parks meets is tomorrow. So if this information can be given to the parks, just so they can verify. And then, yes, if we need to go out for a full bid again, using the specs and everything.
My hands are, I'm done with the topic.
So I appreciate all of your work and effort, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you. It's so nice of you to leave town for a week, so I could do all these things.
Yes, exactly. I do appreciate it, because I don't get any of it. I just want a new basketball court.
All right, so no action is needed on that. So item ten D, then, report on cityhood, Mr. Lamb.
After, after we, the last meeting where we formed the Citizens Committee with the citizens, a lot of discussion was made about the loose end of what we were going to do about the fire department. So, I carefully thought about that and realized that the comments by council were very germane to the topic. And so, I scheduled a meeting with the Orient Township to discuss the feasibility. I had a very, very productive meeting with Mr. Barnett and his office manager, and the resulting was, I just, I'm going to report a couple of facts. There was no resolution to anything, but these are the facts. The, the fire department budget is eight million dollars. There's four fire stations, so he mentioned that, so equitably, it might be considered that each fire station costs two million dollars a year to run. Then the discussion was that the fire station one downtown was predominantly response to the village calls. He indicated, though, that him and his department were more than happy to provide us with the statistics of exactly what percentage of the calls were village properties versus the entire township. Station one is the busiest, but we're not sure where the calls are. So he offered to do that data, and the township also indicated they had no dogs in the fight. They're basically, they're unbiased on the opinion as to whether the village should become a city or not. It's not their business, they said, and they would be open and impartial in, in our discussions moving forward. We also identified, I had also contacted Oxford, and had a wonderful conversation with their police chief, so helpful, but they're way too far away and could never produce a response time or service for us. They said if we wanted to purchase our own multimillion-dollar fire station and fire engines, they would talk to us about contracting to staff it. I thanked him graciously, and moved on. Then we went on to, we discussed that the, my conclusion is that the village does not have any other option for fire protection emergency services other than the township. I did suggest at the meeting that the, the new city would own eight percent of station one and eight percent of the property, but we didn't discuss anything beyond that. And then I notified them, and we, and we agreed that we currently pay the fire mileage of five eighty-six. The township receives about four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, and the DDA receives a hundred and seventeen thousand. So that was agreed upon. Those figures were concurred upon. And then, so it appeared to me as a rational starting point for our future discussions, the high end, I think, would be the two million. But I think a more reasonable approach for us to consider would be perhaps the percentage of use of the fire station by the village times the two million might give us a closer approximation of the cost. I'm thinking that this may kill the cityhood consideration, because our main cost savings would be if the fires services remained the same. So, I asked Mr. Barnett if he would send us those statistics, so we could evaluate it at our first cityhood meeting. And then I've heard that only one citizen has picked up an application to join the citizens committee. All right, so, that's, that's where we stand. Oh, thank you. So that's, I think I have all, we have all the information necessary to have a fruitful first meeting and just open discussion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number eleven, then, call to the public. Again, open the call to the public, same as at the beginning of the meeting. Anybody? Seeing none, I'll close call to the public. Item twelve, council comments. I'm going to start with you, Mr. Lamb. You started the other side last time.
I, I see that the Dragon on Lake was very successful, and I saw a lot of parking issues, that I feel sorry for the people that got there. A lot of, a lot of tow truck action for the first time I've seen, and, but yeah, it was very, very busy out there, and I'm, I'm glad that it went well for everyone.
Mr. Camproni?
Yeah, I guess everybody had a good time. I don't, I don't go to that, because nothing good happens after six o'clock for us old people. No, just kidding. I heard a lot of good things. The police department, outstanding job, you know, keeping everybody safe. You know, there's two ways you can look at the police. You can look at them like, they're out to get me, or you can look at them like, they're here to protect me and serve. And I choose the second, because in this, especially this new chief has made it perfectly clear, he's here to protect us, not out to get anybody. You know, now you screw up, you're going to pay for it, but he's here to, to protect each and every one of us equally. No favorites, no, no, nothing like that. So, I thank you for that. I, I just had, I got a question for the village manager. I don't know if you'd answer it now or later, but the water drawdown, is it, has it started? The water, for the winter? Don't you usually start it a week or so before Labor Day?
No.
I mean, an inch or so?
No, we don't start until October.
October?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that's, that's just a question, okay. Everybody have a happy, safe Labor Day.
Mr. Ford?
Yeah, we had a Pink Creek Trail meeting this past week. There, a couple, a couple items came from that. One is their, the new Pink Creek Trail manager, they went through interviews and have tendered an offer to that person, and they're having a special meeting tomorrow to, to see if that goes through, but they've been operating without one, as I reported before. Because they haven't had one, they, they've canceled the Labor Day bridge walk that usually occurs at the Rochester end of things, but they wanted to make sure that everybody knew that, I said canceled, it's actually been postponed. They have every intention of bringing it back once they are fully staffed. There's been issues on Pink Creek Trail with my term, electric motorcycles. These aren't the, these are vehicles with no pedals. They've had them on Pink Creek Trail, and it is against their rules and, and stuff that are not allowed on the Pink Creek Trail. I've witnessed them, along with the gentleman that does their patrolling, their bike patrol. It's not his job to enforce it, but he has noticed it and has reported it, as I did at the meeting. The, the concern, obviously, for them, seeing them on the trail, leaving, personally, seeing them come up and then coming through the village, and, and being either on the sidewalk, or the streets, or popping wheelies on, right downtown. I don't know, you know, that, if it's the behavior that we can monitor, if we can't control the motorcycles, I would like to see us establish something, so we can address that. The more and more activities that we have downtown, the less, and less we need of this type of activity. Dragon on Lake, I thought, was, was wonderful. We went downtown and, and went to Greens Park. I said, my only concern is the Greens Park staffing for the event, because it, I don't know, it's our park, yet I don't know that we had, you know, representation, representing us there, which, which then makes me wonder about the rule enforcement that we have for the park. You know, no dogs, no alcohol, and the other, other park rules that we have, there was nobody there to enforce it. And it may not have been any issues. I did hear complaints about dogs being in there, but I, I want to see if we can't, I'm concerned if it's, if our interests aren't represented there, that, I don't, I don't like here for that. That's all I have.
Mr. Dan DeLitas?
Again, I just want to encourage anybody to, anybody that's interested, we, we do have a council vacancy, and the applications are due by Thursday, but I'd encourage anybody that's interested to please apply. Thanks.
Ms. Mosher?
Okay. I always say thank you for all the people that came, or less than five, or whatever we have, five. And I was out of town for a week, but coming back on Saturday, and, and I missed the Dragon on Lake, but I saw the people, I saw people walking, crossing the street, going into downtown. It was really nice to see people out and about, and, and it's good, of course, for our downtown. So that's it. And Labor Day, I cannot believe, I cannot believe, so kids are going back to school. Can't believe it. It's just like, where did the summer go? But, it is what it is.
On the good news, the cider mills start to open Labor Day weekend, so...
I know, I know.
Goodison, speaking for the Pink Creek Trail, head down there, get some cider and doughnuts. I'm very excited for that.
Yeah.
I also kind of echo your comments on the Pink Creek Trail. I was on it with my kids the other day, and we had not just an electric, like a class three e-bike, it's a class three e-bikes that are not allowed, but a gas-powered bike as well going by us. And also, other electric things, like scooters and stuff, are not allowed, unless they're like actual mobility devices. But my kids and I were talking about it, because as a mom, that's really hard, when you have bikes. It used to be, you know, you, you learn to ride your bike, then you get better, and as you get better and as you go faster, your bike handling skills get better, you learn etiquette, and now people can just jump on and go really fast without having learned any of the etiquette. And, you know, when you have small children that are not always predictable, that becomes really hard when people are not aware. As a cyclist, I'm always slowing down and being aware that small children are unpredictable. So, agree that it has become much more of a challenge on the Pink Creek Trail, and look forward to hearing what the Pink Creek Trail comes up with, or, and if we need to partner with the Pink Creek Trail in some way, I'd be happy to. The Jubilee was very well done. Spent several hours downtown on Saturday, and my kids always love it. Well done to the chalk artists. We didn't, did, did we get any rain in town that just damaged the chalk? I don't, I think it sprinkled a little bit, but, love to see all the chalk artists out there, and the vendors, and, yeah, it's a great time. I think the DDA boat got second place, if I, and that's the first time that combined Oxford DDA, Lake Orion DDA dragon boat team got a very respectable second place. So congratulations to them, as, you know, representatives of our communities. So well done to the art center for the Jubilee. Also, you may have heard and seen on the, on Facebook, that Oat Soda will be changing hands in October, so wanted to take a moment to thank Oat Soda and the owners, Jen and Jason, for, you know, all the, their commitment to the community over the past five years that they've been opened. We're looking forward to what the new restaurant brings to our community, but wanted to say thank you for all their, their involvement in the community. If you don't know them, they are wonderful people, they have been wonderfully involved in our community, supporting our community in more ways than one. So wanted to say thank you, though it will be a loss to our community, but I'm hopeful for the new tenants in the restaurant that will go in there as well. And I think last on my list, you are, oh, most people are aware that Mosheri is, has a development planned at the Jacobson's property, and if you read in the paper, it went through, so it's a joint project, because part of it is in the village, part of it is in the township. The township proved their PUD application, and I went through, we, we haven't seen it yet at the planning commission for our second, we did a public hearing, but it hasn't come yet back to the planning commission for the village, but just wanted to give an update, that they have made some changes since their first presentation, that were very responsive to the needs of the community, so they did reduce the density a little bit in the township portion, providing some more public amenities, pickleball courts for, that are open to the public, and not just the HOA, that will be maintained by the HOA, small playground. And so, it seems that they're being very responsive to the needs of the community. I also saw on there that they're keeping some of the mature trees that are in different places on the property. And so, looking forward to just seeing how that project evolves, whether you love it, whether you hate it. You know, my house, I look back at it, so it borders my house, so I will see it. So have been, I'm so thankful that they have been responsive to some of the needs of the community. Again, that will come back to the, the village for the seven homes that are planned for the village as well. It'll come back to our planning commission, but just wanted to make the public aware that that project is moving forward on the township side right now, and they have made some changes in response to the public comments that were made at the public hearing that was held by the village and the township jointly. So, I think that is all I have for today. So, item thirteen, village manager comments, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a few things. Council vacancy, we have received three applications for the current council vacancy. The final day to submit an application is Thursday, August twenty-eighth at four P.M. Clerk will schedule applicant interviews for Tuesday, September second, prior to the special meeting at four thirty. Interview times will be emailed to the council members by the end of this week. The cityhood committee, one resident did come in today and take an application for the cityhood committee, but nobody has turned one in at this time. We are in the middle of the annual village audit. Administrative staff is providing auditors with all the requested information. Last year's audit was completed in December. This year, administration is aiming to have the audit completed and presented to council at the last meeting in November. I attended a meeting at Lake Orion Schools. The Lake Orion Community Schools will have on the November ballot a bond proposal... The Lake Orion Community Schools will have on the November ballot a bond proposal for $272 million for district-wide improvements. If you want any information about that, go to the Lake Orion Schools website. I've received several calls expressing concerns about the low lake level. DPW and DNR have all our mechanisms that we control closed at this time, and the lake is where the lake is at, we can't make it go any higher. Greens Park, there have been concerns about the staffing at, at Greens Park, and we are well aware. Unfortunately, everybody went back to school and/or college, so we're pretty short staffed there. We're doing what we can, but the police have been assisting us in patrols there, and if anybody sees anybody breaking any rules and, and we're not there, please let the police know that somebody's violating. The steeple, we have received a contract with a scope of work for the steeple. It's under review by the village attorney. Mr. Lamb spoke to the Atwater Park basketball court. I'll present all that information to the Parks and Rec Committee tomorrow at the meeting. Village offices will be closed Monday, September 1st for Labor Day, and I wanted to make one more thing that's not on here. Mr. Kindred had mentioned the, the testing. We are a member community of Michigan Rural Water Association, and as a part of that membership, we get some free services, so they're going to come do a leak detection on Jackson Street, just to see if we do have any leaks there. We're not too concerned that we do, but just to make sure, we're going to check, so, thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
It's too early.
I'll support. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, meeting adjourned.